Selectment's meeting for October twenty seven, two thousand twenty-two. It is six oh two P M. Can I please have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And first thing on the agenda is review, vote, and sign the warrants for the special town meeting on eleven fourteen, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Okay. Have there been any other additions or changes to it, other than just changing the order of them?
There's been some slight modifications, Mr. Chairman. Article, let's see here. Article one was one through three before. We've now combined them all into one article. Town council had indicated that we can combine them all into one article for one amount, but list them individually for the prior year bills, fiscal year bills. So we can, we can do that and we can avoid. And we've done that subsequently thereafter for a board of health article later on in the articles to cut down on the, a number of articles.
So we're down, well, we're still up to thirty-one.
Right, right. So there was some additional add-ons as well. So that was, that was one of the, one of the changes that you've seen from last week to this week. Article two is an addition. This is to take care of the server issue. It was, we looked at funding sources for the server. The fifty thousand for the Shepherd building wouldn't qualify under the, how the article was written. So we would probably be the best bet to just take care of it through free cash. And that can be done. We have a estimate. That's the bill. I called them to confirm, to make sure that that's a firm price. They did indicate that that would be the firm price, so.
Finance committee already approved it?
Yes, yep. So the finance committee met on Wednesday last night. We went through these, except for Article four, which was added today, which I wanted to speak to next about. But they approved all of these, except for Article thirty-one. Article four, they did not see yet. They are going, I did notify them that Article four is, is, you know, most likely going to be there, but they are meeting the night that we meet with town council. They will review that article then. They've given me the indication that they will do that. It's still, the reason why they haven't reviewed it yet is because the RFP is not due back until Monday. I don't know who is going to respond yet. I don't know what the figures are, the, the pricing structure, or who the entities will be. Hopefully on Monday, we'll have some responses. We haven't received anything as of yet, but we're, we're hopeful that we can do that. We'll have to work with town council on the motion on this, because it's kind of vague in nature, but I think it, it will cover us, because we can't use the article that was written the last time, because it was specific to one entity that may or may not be selected this time.
Okay. Why didn't they, what was the issue with Article thirty-one? It seems pretty clear-cut.
Yeah, so the issue with Article thirty-one was they wanted to have a specific use for what this money was going to be intended for. The, the highway department recently had an auction last month on some, some equipment. They had received that auction with receipt of some funds of that auction. That, that, that money was deposited, obviously, into the general fund. We won't capture that, that money until next year's free cash calculation. So, so you would have to take it from free cash this year. And they wanted to know what is the intended use of those funds? And the highway department had indicated that they, you know, if something was to arise or come up where there was a good possibility of getting some, some equipment on auction that they could purchase, some slightly used equipment like they have in the past, that they wanted to have some flexibility to do that. They, the finance committee decided that they felt that they wanted to know some specific uses, so they decided to decline the, the support of Article thirty-one.
Okay.
So could Jeremy rewrite this, or does he just want, he wants to leave it?
He want, I, I, I circled back around with him. He said to leave it the way it is and he'll speak on the floor.
And he defended on the floor.
Yeah. Other than that, the finance committee recommends all of the rest of them. Like I said, they will be, you know, meeting the night of the special. They will discuss Article four. That's why you don't see a recommendation there, because they haven't reviewed it yet. And we don't know what we're going to get back for responses, or, you know, I hope we get responses back, but we may not get any responses back, too. So we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Might have to push the public safety complex a little quicker than possible. Yeah, okay. Were there any other additions?
So there was no other additions. There were some, some more meat added to, there was an article for the radio infrastructure project that just had a, a dollar amount. So after reviewing with town council, if you look at Articles twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, you'll see that there was more meat that was added to those articles specific to those lease agreements. We will have to work on the motions. Article twelve is, is allowing for a fourteen-year lease for American Towers, for the town to get in to a fourteen-year lease with American Towers LLC. That's the Gilbert Road site. Article thirteen is SBA Structures LLC, and that's for the amendment to the existing lease on Coy Hill. And Article fourteen is for Hamden Communications Corp. Those, that is for the Southbridge Road site. That is a new lease, three years. And then those dollar figures will also be read into, into the motion on, on, on the floor. It's anticipated that, depending on when they start and when the leases are signed, you know, to get us to the end of the fiscal year, it's about forty-six thousand dollars?
Yes, it's, yes, depending on when it starts, whether November or December, but it's roughly, I think, at the most, maybe forty, forty-eight if we started in November.
If we started in November, it'd be forty-eight, yeah.
It's less than that with.
I don't anticipate us starting in November.
Yeah, I don't think so either. By the time everything's signed and stuff, I think you're starting in December.
At best case.
Yes.
Yearly, those, those leases will go up. They will have an escalator of, of three to four percent on, on each lease. And the, you know, the average yearly lease will, will start at, once you, in the whole year, about sixty-five thousand? About sixty-five thousand, and then every year, there will be an increase.
Okay.
Article ten and Article eleven, those, it was added in there after doing some discussion at, at the finance committee. They didn't, they passed on those articles the last time. They did make a recommendation, because we did bring out the, the regional agreement, and it's clearly stated in the regional agreement that it's the town's responsibility to pay for the tuition and the transportation. Now, obviously, if there's a new regional agreement that, that is, you know, that is drafted, which there's been talks about, you know, there may be an opportunity to change that or to modify it. But as of the current regional agreement, the town is responsible to pay those two bills for the out-of-district student.
I thought that was required by law.
It is, it is also required by law as well, but it's also in, is in the, you know.
It's required by law. We have to do it.
But a regional agreement, isn't Smith vocational in Northampton?
Correct.
So we have a regional agreement with a town?
No, no, no. So the, in the regional agreement, it says that it speaks specifically to vocational students. And if the vocational student is accepted into a vocational program, then the town would have to have the responsibility of paying the tuition and the transportation. This particular student was accepted as part of this program that is offered at Smith. It is not offered at the membered Pathfinder.
All right. Any other ones?
Nope. Everything else is, is, was the same as it, as it appeared at the last one. The Board of Health, obviously, Article thirty, you'll see that two of the bills from prior year have been, you know, morphed together again to try to save on, on separate articles, you know, there's still one of the same. So you have twenty, Article thirty of twenty-one hundred dollars for a bill and three hundred and fifty dollars for another bill.
Do we know why the bills in one and thirty weren't paid in the fiscal year?
So I'm not sure as to why in twenty-one, why they weren't paid in fiscal, for Article one. Article.
Oh, the K, well, K P Law we knew about.
The K P Law we knew about. Yeah. And Article twenty, and, and April one, I think, was just an, was just an error, the April of this year. I can't speak for the Board of Health.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Free cash, everything has been put in to have free cash certified. We're waiting on certification from the state, but it is, from what I've discussed with the town accountant, it is imminent, you know, it should be, you know, within any day now.
Do we have a rough number?
Uh, roughly north of a million dollars.
For free cash?
Yeah.
Nice.
Well, and, and to, to the credit of what the board did in the spring by holding the line of, you know, three hundred thousand dollars of the free cash, you know, that, that attributed to that. So you guys, when you had, in springtime, you had, you know, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that you didn't spend. So that was part of the new calculation from the get-go. So you had a base of three fourteen to start with.
Yeah, right.
So that's, you know, if you didn't have that, then you'd probably be somewhere around the eight hundred thousand dollar mark.
Okay.
Now, you're also going to have, you know, some, some significant investments here. This, this warrant is calling for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of investments into your, your savings account through capitalization and stabilization. It's huge. You know, the town hasn't seen a deposit into stabilization since two thousand and nine. That's, that's a great credit to the Board of Selectment for, for doing that. So I think that's, you know, that, that's, it speaks volumes for, for the town and its, you know, sincerity to try to buckle down and to try to, you know, move towards a goal of a public safety complex.
Now, has Finance Committee acknowledged that?
I, I highlighted that to them.
Okay. Right? Very good. All right, do you have any other questions?
I do not.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, just, all the articles look good. I'm, I'm just impressed of that article, ten and eleven. You know, it just doesn't make sense that we pay a hundred dollars per day to send, to have somebody, someone's education, but we pay two hundred dollars to take them to the
Yeah.
We should be all private kids.
Obligated to do it, though.
That's for sure.
I like the new format, too. I think, you know, the, the ones that just have the one sentence explanation, I think, is a good idea, and I think the, the general wording is better, like you said, to make it more clear, not so cryptic when you're just, you know, a citizen in the audience trying to figure these out.
That's what we tried last spring, and FinCom had a fit.
Oh, okay.
So I'm glad we were able to do it. Good job, Jim.
Yeah, they were very helpful. FinCom was very, very helpful, so.
Good, great source. I'm very, very happy we have a FinCom now.
Yeah, thank goodness.
It's like, everything's coming together and, you know, now if we can get a capital planning.
Yeah.
That would be.
Yeah. Well, maybe the coming year.
Yeah. Maybe if people see that, you know, FinCom's doing so well and everything's going well, things are coming together, that they might want to step up and be part of capital planning, especially with public safety complex and stuff in the future.
It's a huge, huge undertaking by the town, yeah, sure.
All right. So if you have no more questions, and do you have anything to add, sir?
No, I would just, you know, say to the board if they, you know, just close the warrant and then take a vote on it and.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept and sign the warrant for the special town meeting.
And close it.
And close it.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Benny Bailey, aye.
David Dufran, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And you have an original?
It's right here.
Can I sign in blue?
I don't care what color you sign in.
Oh, you don't? Where's my red?
I have a pen that's right.
Yeah, I can tell. Laurie will love it that you signed in blue, because it shows that it's an original, not a copy.
Yeah, see, that's why I do it.
Are we supposed to be signing this in front of Laurie?
No, I already asked her.
Okay.
I attest to it. My signature will be on there. And then the constable, who is sitting in the audience, will also sign it.
There's a constable in the audience?
There is.
There is.
Maybe he's watching us sign it.
He looks very official, huh?
He is.
Yeah.
All right. All right, moving on. Review and possible vote on schedule of fees for parking citations. This is being brought forward by the Chief of Police.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Jerry Mallett, Chief of Police. Some time ago, Millie and I had talked about upping the parking fees, and it's about time that I have to order new citations. So we were looking at this again, and the stuff I handed into you last meeting, I had compared our citations to Westbrookfield and Ware, our two closest neighbors. Westbrookfield has, all their citations are twenty-dollar fees, and Ware was fifteen. So I went through ours and just, I upped some by five, others by ten. We did, actually, the town minister and I spoke with Millie. Millie thought we should go higher. I guess it'd be all what the board thinks. If you want to go higher, maybe we just make them all twenty dollars, like Westbrookfield does, or if you like the way that I redid it, we go with, with that.
So one thing I have an issue with is, where is it? Within ten feet of a hydrant?
Ware actually charges fifty dollars for that.
It's only twenty dollars if we, it's fifteen now, but twenty?
Twenty, yeah.
That's a health and safety thing, because you can't get to the hydrants.
The only one I saw that was higher was Ware. They had a Schedule B that was, that was under. If you, I don't know if you still have those ones that I gave you. They have that one as fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's probably one that could be higher, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'd say that should be higher, because you can't, it, twenty bucks, whatever, but I don't want people parking near these hydrants. And twenty dollars is not going to get the, the point. What, what's your input on that, Chief?
I don't know. We don't run into that very often, but I have seen that before, so, you know, I think that that might be a pretty good, a little bit better of an incentive not to do it.
We want it to be a deterrent.
Right.
We don't want somebody saying, eh, it's twenty bucks, whatever. And then a house, or somebody pay the price because of. For hydrant, yeah.
And while you're on that, maybe we do sidewalk and crosswalk, up that one a little higher.
What are you looking at, Ware?
Maybe put that one up to twenty instead of the fifteen.
Yeah, if you park near sidewalks.
Number seven and eight.
Yeah, I would bump those up.
Who do you think they should be?
I'd, we'll do the twenty.
I think, may I?
Yes, sir.
I think we do the hydrant higher than everything else, twenty. Easier to remember, easier to say.
Twenty, everything else fifty for the hydrant?
Do you get, do you get a lot of this?
Yeah, because it seems like there's a lot of fifteen and this and that.
The one we use the most is when we went to parking van, parking during snow events. So that's the one they really use a lot, but, like Millie said, Millie had told us, what'd she say? I don't think it's been changed in thirty years. So we're way behind the times.
And then parking in a handicap, isn't there a state minimum?
So that's why I was looking all over. Ware has it at a hundred. I looked in Boston, Boston has it on a hundred. So I think maybe that's what the state is at right now.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Definitely, we, we want to take care of the handicapped people, you know, a lot of respect for them.
Yeah, people shouldn't be parking in those spots. Same with, you know, it's like parking in the hydrant. It's just one of those spots that you don't do.
Yeah. So I, I agree with Derek, and I think, yes, the one that should be the higher fee is the fifty dollars in front of the hydrant, twenty, twenty dollars for everything else, and then parking in front of the, the handicap should be the minimum, a hundred.
All right, so you're saying like seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, they're all going to be twenty now?
Yeah, just do twenty, because it's just too much back and forth, fifteen, twenty, this.
You'll have to make change then anyway with fifteen, so.
Yeah. Twenty, I'll just give you twenty.
Yeah, exactly.
Much easier to accept payment.
And the value of today's twenty dollars is, you know, it's a lunch. If you go to, you know, Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, you spend twenty dollars very easy for just a, just a meal.
You know, you look at something like obstructing traffic that could fall under fire, because if somebody's parked in an area where the flow of traffic can't get through and can't get a fire truck through, again, that's, that's a safety thing. So that's, you know, for that to be ten dollars, that was, it's ridiculous, you know.
Yeah, we had some that were five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody cares about five dollars. That's coffee.
Right?
It's like, you know, nobody takes that stuff serious. It's actually a waste of time writing the ticket.
Yeah.
At that point.
It'll cost more.
Cost more money. So.
I think there was an input from.
Yeah, yeah. Do, are you good with?
I'm good with that, yes.
So.
A hundred.
Well, fifty for the hydrant, hundred for the handicap, and then everything else twenty across the board. You good with that, Rich?
I am.
Okay. So, Joe?
Joe Congar, resident. Could I suggest that maybe with the hydrant, since it's a fifteen foot from a hydrant, maybe Highway could put a red line along the curb, fifteen feet from the side of the hydrant.
It should be marked, yeah. Yeah, they should be marked, there should be markings for a hydrant. A lot of areas do, do them.
For hydrants themselves, no, I believe so. They're not currently marked for that, no.
No, but if we could do that, see if highway slots, see if Jeremy and them can get out there and maybe paint that area ten feet away, both sides, so you got a twenty-foot zone.
I have a question for you. In front of the post office, you have a hydrant. You have a parking spot here and a parking spot here, but a parking spot right in front of the hydrant is blocked off. So how does that work? You're not ten feet from that hydrant.
I think that was.
I think that's. Yeah, it's because they.
There's no parking there.
It's not running along the street.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not running along the street. There's an area that, there's a parking spot in front of that that's, that's X-ed out specifically as a fire, fire zone, yes.
And that's, that's otherwise marked. So it's marked indicating there are legal parking spots there.
Okay, because I park there all the time, and I thought, no, I pay fifty bucks to go get my milk?
Just get it.
I feel like a trap.
Everything else is good, but if Karen parks there.
Karen, Karen parked there again.
You know, the one that is very funny is when you walk towards the high school, there's that hydrant right in the middle of the sidewalk. So you're walking on the sidewalk, either go left or right, right in the middle.
All right, so we're good with the decision?
Yep. Motion?
Are you, well, you good with that, Chief?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. All right.
And the parking clerk suggested that, too, going higher.
Adam, you good?
I'm good with it, yeah.
So we have any comments from the public about it?
No.
That's good. All right?
Motion to accept the amended schedule of fees for parking citations.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Benny Bailey, aye.
David Dufran, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So next thing is vote on the disposal of a decommissioned police cruiser. You want to give us update on that, Chief?
Yes, so we just took possession. Yes, so we just took possession of a twenty-twenty-two Ford police interceptor that was awarded at town meeting in May. That came in and is in the rotation now. So that is replacing the vehicle that was, has a hundred ninety thousand almost on it. It's got check engine lights, not going to pass inspections, it's worthless basically.
How many engine hours do you even remotely know?
God, I couldn't even imagine, yeah. So we've had that since twenty fifteen, which is unheard of.
Yeah.
Running a police car. And it's unheard of to have that many miles on it because a car, a normal car with a hundred ninety thousand miles on it, a police car with a hundred ninety thousand miles on it, that's almost double. You're getting almost a vehicle four hundred thousand miles on it. So I was coming to you guys tonight to see about the disposal of it. I know in the past, we brought it to Copart to auction off. So it'd go worldwide. And I think that would take all, everything off the town because of all the check engine lights and safety issues.
So you're recommending to send it in auction, auto auction?
Auto auction, so yeah. And then I, I don't know.
Do we have to be more specific about how it's decommissioned or just authorize you get?
Yeah, the board has the authority to, you know.
I guess whatever's prices goes out to general fund.
Correct.
Right.
All right. So I guess we just give a generalized authorization to dispose of the vehicle as you see fit.
Okay.
Get the best dollar you can.
I'll try.
Trying to think of other, are you good with that?
I'm good. Sometimes they actually cut it in half and put the police car in and spot specific pieces. So people are clapping, oh, there's a police car there.
Give Adam and his crew something to do.
I always love using the tools.
There you go. Did you get some new ones?
Yeah, we're working on it. I'm good. It's just appropriate to save money.
There's no need having it in our books. And you can't trade it. It's not going to have a value.
All right. Motion to approve the disposal and decommissioning of the police cruiser, giving the authority to the police chief.
For auction.
For auction.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Iker, aye.
Eddie Bailey, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
And it's been stripped of everything.
Get it out of our parking lot now.
Firefighters, he helped us, he did it all himself.
Bring everything out?
Anything that says police is off of it, anything that says Warren is off of it. It's just a block. So that way, when it goes wherever it goes, it doesn't have any ties to us.
If it ends up in Afghanistan somewhere, they don't have Warren police on it.
Exactly.
What was that thing? Wasn't there a?
That actually happened, you know, so.
Yeah, it was.
Copart, if, talking with Patrick, when he told me to take all that stuff off, they, if they get a vehicle that has a company name, they'll either rip it off or paint it over. And I asked them why they did that, is because they actually auctioned off something that went to Afghanistan, it was on the news.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like Joe's Repair or something like that. And it was actually used in a convoy of.
Exactly.
It was a Taliban fighter. Had it. And the guy was getting all kinds of like hate mail and stuff because his phone number and everything was still on the van. So, yeah. It's not good. All right. All right, discussion and possible vote on use of American Rescue Plan funds awarded to the town. Do we have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a updated sheet in your pack, in your binders. We had some additional requests that were made by a couple departments. One being tonight, the fire department with a proposal on a twenty-twenty-three Chevy Silverado plow truck. There is also in your packet, a, an estimate with that off of the state bid list at Colonial Municipal Group. They had put a quote together for the town that will be bought on the state contract. Also, in the, in the packet tonight, you'll see that there is a reserve for an allocation of eight thousand dollars. I'm anticipating that that's going to be the cost for, to pay for an ARPA audit that the town is going to have to be required to do. So I would recommend that, you know, either we, you know, reserve some funds for that for, in case, you know, when that, when that happens. And then also, there is a request from the highway department. It's in an email. Jeremy couldn't be here this evening, but he did send an email in detail to what he was looking to do. And that request is there for twelve thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars for a computer control system for sand and salt. That will, that will monitor how much sand and salt is put on the roads as rising prices of sand and salt.
So it's like a GPS system to track where he's already gone?
Well, where he's gone and how much amount of the sand and salt has been sanded the roads. So that it will monitor it, help him better understand how much each storm costs the town to sand and salt the roads. He will have them installed in three of his trucks to start. And for three units to have them installed is twelve thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. The Chevy Silverado that's being proposed by the fire department is fifty-six thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and four cents. That's with a plow. The estimate is in the packet as well. The fire chief is here this evening, ready to speak on it, should you have any questions. If those were approved and if the audit was also encumbered those funds, that would still leave a small balance of a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and four cents that we can, you know, slowly look at projects that, you know, may arise, you know, through the next, you know, few months or thereabouts. It's tough to anticipate, you know, what the economy is going to be doing, but it is a very volatile market out there, as everybody knows, and prices have gone up significantly. But these, these capital investments that the board has decided to make in various departments will help for, you know, future budgets that we won't have to address these matters right away because of the capital investments that have been made through ARPA on a lot of these projects, you know. So, and you're finishing some projects too. You're finishing the Western Star and taking care of a plow truck for Highway as well. So those are, those are the projects. Like I said, there's no rush on the, on the balance. You know, we, you know, we should see how some of the, how some of these other things that are going on in the, in the town play out. And then if we need to tap into something for ARPA in the next coming up months, you have a little bit of a pushing.
We actually have until twenty twenty-six to spin all the ARPA many, April twenty twenty-six.
What was the thing at the sewer department? It's the other side of the grid screw?
Yeah, that was the bar rack.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that wasn't part of the, the original RFP that went out for, the grid screw that went out. It's my understanding that the, the town just wanted to replace the grid screw and didn't do the bar racks. And so the bar rack is something that would be, you know, from what Ralph had indicated, the chief operator would be kind of expensive. Could be just as much as the grid screw, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that would work in conjunction with the grid screw and act as an arm to grab the, the stuff that the grid screw would be kicking back, right, Rich?
No, it grabs, the grid screw is for grit.
Grit, yeah.
And the other thing is for, like, if you flush a wipe.
A wipe, for wipes, yeah.
Yeah, anything, you know, washcloth goes down the toilet, something like that.
Yeah.
It grabs that. I don't know if you remember, it had like kind of a screener thing and an arm that came up and funneled it into like a big trash bin, basically.
Yeah, things, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I don't know, Ralph's going to look at.
He's going to look at some, some prices, you know. It's usually.
I get what you're saying, the grid screw, because that's kind of a custom thing that has to be made.
Right, right, right. And he wasn't, he wasn't, you know, he was kind of surprised that it wasn't part of the whole grid screw project, that this was separate, but it's a separate thing.
Yeah. So Ralph's going to look around and just see what's available and get back to us.
Okay. All right. So tonight, we're looking at the fire pickup truck.
So we're just going to approve.
Jeremy's stuff.
The gray stuff. We've approved everything else.
Everything else is, yeah. I mean, everything else is either been allocated or in the process of being bought. You'll have before you tonight, a bill from, for the keyless entry that was approved at the, at the last meeting to sign off on. It's, the company's requiring a fifty percent deposit on the services. I still want to, you know, go through the insurance with the, with the company and go through a contract with the company. So I would ask that if the board would be so kind to sign the, the bill and then I will release, I will submit the bill for, for payment once we have the contract signed and once we have the insurances verified from the company.
Okay.
So we can put a sticky on that and have them give you the check?
Either that, I mean, yeah, either that or, yeah, yeah. I just want to hold the bill until I get the, I'll have it signed, but I want to hold the bill until, until we get the, I get the contract and then verify the insurance from the company.
Okay.
It's a, it's a private entity that's going to be doing that, so.
So is this Chevy Silverado available? It's ready to pick up?
So, no, it's not. I mean, it has to be ordered. It's only one of them, so I'm hoping I can get this if it was, excuse me, Animal Boy Fire Chief. If this is approved by the board tonight. So I had to, we've talked about this project a few times in different meetings. Unfortunately, the other, the other Chevy company that we purchased the Tahoe through, not long ago, about a year ago now, they are no longer, the contracts changed. New contracts came in and they're no longer on state bid. So I had to go back and have a company that is currently on state bid go ahead and re-quote everything. Originally, we were looking for a crew cab. They are no longer available. They have not had, they, they've been shut down in terms of Chevy allowing them to be ordered at this point. So we had to go with an extended cab, which will work. It will still work for our purposes. It's a little smaller, but it is what it is. So this one here, he does have, he indicated to me, he has one black vehicle that's on order, which I told him at this point, you know, with the way that the vehicles and the chassis and issues that we have running, everyone's running into, I don't care what color it is. So we'll make it work. I'll put a red stripe on it, like similar to the Cruiser. We'll do what we got to do. But I'm hoping to, if it's approved by the board tonight, I'm hoping to get a phone call into them first thing in the morning and get that vehicle reserved for the town if possible. If not, we may have to wait a little bit and see if, how that happens, but at least we can allocate some money towards that and see how the ordering process goes through. You know, my, our original thought was to get this with the plow package and a plow so we can help Highway out. Obviously, you know, I can't, I can't plow the stations, you know, only with this. I mean, I will need Highway to help us, you know. But this is to get us up and down driveways in emergency situations, to help with the ambulance and on calls and stuff. Obviously, to help supplement Highway and get the, you know, to give them a hand. And we certainly will be cleaning out our, our area now that we have some capability with that, if this vehicle, you know, works out. But, you know, I think this will give us a few different options we never had before. And it's a vehicle that we've also, you know, we've been using, firefighters use their own pickup trucks for almost everything now. And we've never had a vehicle like this in the fleet to be able to put trash and hose lines and everything else in to pick up after a fire and all that. Everyone throws their stuff in personal vehicles. And I really don't like that, especially in this day and age where liability is that all it takes is somebody's vehicle to get really damaged and they get really upset and come to the town and say, hey, I was performing my job. And, you know, right now, the only vehicle we have backup is the old car two, my old Cruiser. That's on its last legs. This will replace that. And that's an SUV, you can't do any of that stuff with it. So this will give us some versatility in terms of not only helping with plowing, but also to transport equipment around and do the day-to-day work and inspections that we need to do on the fire department.
Okay.
So you have any questions?
No.
Do you have any questions, sir?
I like the way you say, no matter what color it is, we just want to get the check done.
At this point, you know, things have, we've never been put in this position before. And Jim can attest to how hard it is to get vehicles right now. So I, you know, I've seen the vehicles coming in that you've never, you know, you just work with the color you're given at this point because you just.
Well, this one's black, right?
This one's black, it'll fit with kind of what we're doing. I didn't ask for black, but they have no red available, they have no white available right now.
Yeah, but you get a theme going on now.
Yeah, so I guess, if anything, I guess it worked out. But, yeah, that was kind of our only option. So I'm hoping to, I will let Jim know. I'm going to call him first thing in the morning if approved tonight, and I will get that vehicle hopefully reserved for us.
This is the same company that we bought the F-550 from.
As well as the old.
The actual truck isn't expensive at all.
No, it's actually.
I wish I could buy a truck that cheap.
Yeah, it's amazing what the state gets for bids on these, yeah.
Because I'm, there's no way you'd touch a Chevy Silverado out there, twenty-twenty-three for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Even the Tahoe, that was fifty-five thousand. You walk into a dealership and buy that today, it's eighty-five. You know what I mean? It's, it's amazing, but.
It's just all the additions to make it a vehicle equipped for you.
This is also the, this is the same company that just outfitted the newest Cruiser that we just picked up the other day.
All right. Do you have anything? No. Good.
Do you have anything, sir?
No.
Do a motion.
Can we roll all this into one motion?
Yeah, if you want to just do it, you know.
Just list them out.
List them out, yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to allocate the following from ARPA funds. Eight thousand dollars for the eventual ARPA audit. Fifty-six thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and four cents for a twenty-twenty-three Chevy Silverado with a snowplow for the fire department. And twelve thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars for a salt and sand computer control system for the highway department.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Iker, aye.
Eddie Bailey, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Joe.
You're welcome.
Get on that phone first thing in the morning. Email now.
I'm good. Call and leave a message right now.
All right. So we got that. And then continue discussion on recent inspection of the town's levy system and potential fines for sources of maintenance and repairs.
You said potential fines.
Fines.
Funding, funding sources.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sounded like F-I-N-E-S, like we're getting fines.
No, no fines, no, no. Please no fines yet. So we've got some information for potential grant opportunities to help us with certain things. I know Jim McKeon was, got some grants for, was it a storage container he got? And for some other equipment, shovels, things like that. And getting stand bags. I know it seems kind of archaic to say, okay, we need shovels and pickaxes and sandbags, but that's kind of what's required to get us out of being in non-compliance on the levy. A lot of this stuff could be done with heavy equipment and much more efficient and quicker. But that's not what's required. What's required to get us out of non-compliance is pickaxes, shovels, and sandbags. And to make sure we have sand available, which we do at the highway department. So we have sand. We just need stuff to put the sand into the bags to help support the levy system and build up the levy system if we need to in case of a breach or a large flood or whatever else that may occur. And it brings us in compliance just having these things on hand. So that's one thing that we are working towards. And, yeah, Jim McKeon's been doing that and doing a great job with it. Some other things we need to do are, we have to do an inspection of the levy system. So the controls and the floodgates and all that stuff that's in there, they haven't been worked in, what, over twenty years?
Yeah.
And we're required to work. And we're required to work them regularly, um, and have them inspected to make sure that they could work. We have not manually done any checks of these, because we may open up a gate that we can't close or turn a valve that just won't shut off again. So we need to have somebody come in and do an inspection of all the mechanical works and run cameras up the pipes and all these drains to make sure that everything is, is good. So that's something else we're gonna have to look at, and if we can find a grant opportunity within here, and that was, it's from mass.gov, um, some of these things that we can do. If we could possibly qualify for something that can help us out with the actual inspections and maybe repairs. The other thing that we have that's a big one that we just cannot fix is the fact that they put the bridge on South Street. That kind of became a part of our levy system, but it was not approved by the Corps of Engineers. Um, it was put in by DOT, Mass DOT, but they didn't get clarification to put that bridge over, over through South Street. And that compromised the levy. And there was no studies or anything on it, and I think we, we're okay now. I, I don't know, because we did give them what we did have from DOT, and I know Jeremy Olson was working with them, getting that information from DOT, because, you know, again, you know, they, they didn't know that that was even put there. It was an approved part of it. Um, and then we also have to get into agreements. Another part of it is entering into, um, agreements with the property owners, because part of the levy system is actually, um, one of the buildings for the mill complex is part of the levy system. So we have to get into an agreement with them on how to exercise the valves and how often in accordance with, um, the, um, maintenance, the OEM on that. And, um, there, there's some work we gotta do as far as with the levy. You know, it's, it's there. We have to maintain it. It's part of our responsibility, but again, none of this stuff's been done for over twenty years. Since they've pretty much closed the mill complex, nobody's been exercising those valves or doing inspections and, or anything else. So that, that's one of the things that we gotta look at how we can do that. So, yeah. Do you have anything?
No.
Does that pretty much cover that?
I think so. I was just looking through this, though. There's a ton of different grant programs, so.
There, there are.
It's a matter of finding a couple that will fit.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing. We gotta go through them and see which ones apply, and, um, I know Jim McKeon was looking at a lot of this stuff and looking, getting grants and stuff, um, to do this. So we gotta figure out basically what, what the Corps of Engineers, their, their last inspection is and see where we are deficient and see if any of these grants will qualify to fix any of those deficiencies. And I think one of the big ones is gonna have to be able to get into the bil, mill buildings, which they're fine with us doing. They have a very, very good work, um, working relationship with us. But we gotta identify who's gonna be responsible for going in there and exercising the valves to make sure that they work. Is it gonna be one of the mill employees or are we gonna have a guy from, say, highway department who goes in there to do it? Because it kinda, levy kinda defeat, defaults onto, onto the highway department. That's why Jeremy Olson's been coming to a lot of meetings and giving a lot of input on a lot of this stuff, too. And I think the other thing we gotta still find is a container. I think we're still searching for a container. I don't know if-
For the sandbags?
Jim McKeon, because we have to store it and it has to be dedicated for that purpose.
He said one of the two that he was getting is going to be dedicated to that.
Okay, alright. And we're gonna be able to store that at the highway department. I know Jeremy was saying that we'd be able to do that. Because all we gotta do is put all that stuff in there, show that we have it available in a response, and basically label it, emergency levy, whatever, whatever we gotta put on there to satisfy the Corps of Engineers, and lock it. Nobody uses tools. Nobody touches anything in there, because we just gotta show each year that we have that, so. We have a plan so far with that stuff, but if we can start looking into some of these, I don't know if each of us wanna look into it. Maybe we all kind of dive into it, look at what our deficiencies are that we gotta fix, and just kind of scan through, hey, maybe this one qualifies. Okay, that one doesn't do it for us. Maybe this one does. And see if we can put in, um, put in to get the grant. Get with, I would say definitely, if we can get with Jim McKeon and see if, make sure he's not already doing one or researching one, but we could all kind of work together to get it done.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
Would Massachusetts Emergency Management be able to help us?
How? I mean, what?
Well-
In what way?
Maybe they can line us up with a grant.
Well, they won't search grants for us.
Nobody?
They may be one of the funding sources in here. I mean, there's literally like twenty pages in here of-
And that's something we have to, we gotta look at what our needs are.
Yeah.
What, what our requirements say, inspections of the dam or minor repairs to flood geeks. If there's a grant that falls in there, whether it's through, um, MEMA or FEMA or whoever, you know, then we'd have to apply for that grant, and then you, they would say, yeah, you qualify, or no, this doesn't qualify as, you know, for our grant, or, hey, we have no more money, you know? Because if it's a competitive grant, it's first come, first served.
I mean, if there was a, a major breach, obviously the first thing you guys would do would be call Emergency Management and the state.
And it's the town's responsibility.
Yeah.
Because we own, we own the levy, which, again, until last year, none of us knew that we own that levy. We, we thought it was the Corps of Engineers property, and they made it very clear that they are not the ones responsible for that levy anymore.
Yeah.
Um, that's why we have to get into compliance, because if there is a breach and it's not in compliance, the Corps of Engineers will not cover it.
Yeah.
But if we can get it into compliance with these things that we do, and if there's a breach of the levy or some, something happens to it, Corps of Engineers covers it.
Yeah.
So it's very much in our benefit to make sure that we fix these things. So, the, the Corps of Engineers will assume that responsibility on that, or the, the cost of it.
I remember when the, uh, in New Orleans, when there was a breach of the levy, and it took out forty thousand acres.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we got a lot of real estate down from the river.
Yeah.
And if there was a lot of backup on that, and that, that levy were to go out all at once, it would, we'd do a lot of damage down river.
I, I, I do know when the river was low, back around, uh, yeah, fifteen years ago. Because, uh, one of the guys from the mill actually walked out to the middle of the river. He said it was going two and a half feet deep, and it was just barely going over the top of the dam. So, if, if there's that much mud behind the dam, you know, you'd have to have a serious damn breach to watch it out.
Well, that's, that's another thing, because that's another deficiency that we had, is one of those property owners drilled a hole through the dam, through the levy. And, because that's where that piping is, remember?
Yeah, there's a pump station.
There's a pump station, that's a net.
It was unclear when that happened, or-
Right, and they don't know if it was authorized. They don't think it was authorized. They couldn't find anything on it. So we gotta get clarification on that, because if they did that and it was not an approved modification of the dam, all that will have to come out.
Well, the pump station, it's on the riverside of the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is for the fire system throughout the mill yard.
So.
Well, how long has that been in there?
Fifty, sixty years.
Alright, the levy was nineteen sixty. Was it, did it predate the levy?
I think it predated, because it's-
See, that, that's where we gotta get clarification on.
I lived in this town for seventy-two years, and I remember a small building on this side of the wall as far back as when I was a little kid.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't know if it does a whole mill. I think it only does the, where the, the, the knitters were.
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure that there's another valve down there.
Because I think it only does that one building that's there, the newer building.
No.
It was for West Warren, though, the, the downtown, because CDBG money a number of years ago disconnected it. I'm pretty sure, and so that, because if they had, well, Adam, right, if they had a fire in West Warren, someone had to run over to the pump, um, to the mills, right, and turn the pumps on?
To my, to my knowledge, the mill is, you know, its own system, so to speak, inside of itself. Um, you know, there's a, there's a twelve, I believe it's a twelve-inch main that runs all the way up from, from, uh, the intersection all the way up to, I, I wanna say it goes as far as Santos Road and, uh, that, that other intersection of, um, of Reed Street. Um, and I believe it runs up from, uh, it's twelve inches up to there, and then it goes smaller up into the, it, it, it constricts all the way up until the elementary school. But the system itself is a diesel jockey pump within the, with, uh, in the pump house at the Wright's Mill that protects all of the complex itself. Uh, I believe there's only one building there that's not sprinklered in that entire, in that entire thing. So they just did a full sprinkler test, um, on that building, uh, on that complex. And then Wright's, Wright's itself, excuse me, Hardwood Knitters itself just did a conversion, uh, because they have that new occupancy in there, the Atlantic, Atlantic Furniture and a couple other things. So they, they run off the same system, but they have a, a upgraded system from what was there initially because of the new use of-
But the water's not coming from the river, is it?
The ri, from-
The water to supply those, is, is it coming from the river or through the water department?
The wa, I believe it's coming through, unless, unless the, the, the pump itself is activated, it's coming from the, from the system itself. I'd have to double-check. I mean, it's, it's, it's a confusing system. I'd have to look at that. I, I, but I, I know for a fact, as soon as that, as soon as there's an activation of any kind, the pumps kick on and then it draws directly from there. There's large, large mains that come directly from the river itself. So if we were to, if, if there was an actual fire there and we were actually using that system itself, it would bypass and they would, the, the pumps would kick on and we'd start using water from the river. So, I mean, there's, yeah, there's, it's, 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 it's quite an intricate system, so.
Because that was one of the things that they had an issue with, the Corps of Engineers, is because they have nothing saying that there's a modification done to the levy for that system.
I, I don't know, I, I honestly don't know enough about that, that, what was done back in those days. I, I don't know when, when this-
Well, back then, it could have been a handshake, and oh, yeah, go for it, or whatever.
I couldn't attest for how that played out back then. I, I don't know.
Yeah, they just don't have, they didn't have the documentation saying what was done or for what purposes or by who. They, all they just know is, hey, there's a hole drilled through our levy, and it's going that way, you know? So.
I do know that the hybrids on Pulaski Street, uh, are in the same system as the new building at Hardwood Knitters. Because there, there was one year that they, uh, hybrid on Pulaski Street broke, and in the boiler room, all the alarms went off, and we had to search the entire building to see where there was a leak.
The wall flow or something?
Eh, and the water flow was outside.
Alright, so yeah, we, we got these grant opportunities. We're gonna have to look at them. Get with, well, get with Jim McKeon. Maybe we could sit and talk more about the levy, because it's been a while since we've talked about the levy, and it, I know, um, Corps of Engineers has been sending some, some material out to us recently. So, we'll get back on that topic, too. You with that?
Yeah.
I'm good, sir. Do we, we have a timeline to do all this?
Um, yeah, before it breaches. Because if anything-
So, is that the better?
So the quicker we do it, the better, because, again, right now, we own it. If there's anything that happens to that dam, it's on our dime. So.
I'd just like to mention that, uh, David Persky would have the, probably the original drawings as to where the water is coming in for Hybrid Knitters.
Okay. David Persky?
Yeah.
Who is he?
He's the, the owner of Hybrid Knitters.
He's the former owner.
I don't believe he's at all involved in that.
He sold that business several years ago.
Well, I, I remember when they were putting up the new buildings, because I've seen the diagrams for it.
Yeah, I, I, he's no longer involved in that. I think he's far away removed from that. I don't believe I even have that-
The most recent owner, he just passed away, and his wife has possession of their property now.
Oh.
And they're being, um, you know, these are, was it lease or contract or something, giving Dex Trust the authority-
Yeah.
-to manage the properties. So, they're, they're the point of contact. That's who we've been working with as far as it, and they've been going back and forth to the owner who's, lives in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
So, but her husband recently passed, what, six months or a year ago?
Probably about a year ago, I think. Well, maybe Dex Trust has the original diagrams.
Yeah.
It would be nice.
It would be nice. We'd have to get with them and see if they could pull up anything. I know they've been doing their research and trying to pull what they can, and a lot of those buildings, there were no diagrams.
When Persky rebuilt the die house, it was in nineteen seventy, 'cause I was working there.
Okay. Yeah, I, I know they, they'd be happy to have whatever they can get, too, because if not, they have to reinvent the whole wheel to the, develop those buildings. Because they can't just come in front of us on, on a, say, a napkin and say, hey, this is what I wanna do, and there you go. No, we wanna see diagrams of the building. I know the building commissioner's gonna be like, okay, what are the work? What are the loads of the building? What can handle this? And, you know, she's gonna wanna know all that, and I know, you know, with the fire chief, he's gonna do all his fire, um, sprinkler system stuff and do his inspections, so, yeah. They need to come up with diagrams.
The napkin days are over.
Yeah, the napkin days and the handshake stuff's over. People wanna see it in writing now. Alright, so we got a plan. Let's stop putting this on the agenda a little more and stop following up with it, because we do gotta do something with the levy and get it done, and if we could work with Jim McKeon, so. Alright, um, moving on. Discussion, oh, which one, okay. Discussion and estab, um, establishing budget guidelines for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Okay, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as, as we had passed the, um, budget calendar, the first date coming up is November third, um, next week. And that's to start, uh, thinking about establishing FY twenty-four's budget guidelines. Typically, the Board of Selectmen would usually, um, you know, establish some guidelines that they'd like to see departments fall into. You know, this is, you know, staying in, in, in line with our, our calendar of, of events and, and trying to establish, um, the right directives, uh, to departments on a, on a, on a timely manner. So I just wanted to put it on the agenda to have you guys start thinking about it. Maybe next week, we can, um, have some continued discussion on, on what your thoughts are in terms of, uh, the guidelines and some guidance. You could certainly, you know, as, as, you know, mentioned in the calendar, you know, you could do like a-
know, you could do like a, um, you know, some communities do a, a level, level funded budget, which would theoretically be almost like a cut to a department. You could do a level services budget, which is keeping the same level of services and expenses, but you know, anticipating whatever the inflation is. You could do a, a one percent increase, a two percent increase. Um, you know, those are, those are some of the models that other communities use. Um, but it's important to get, you know, kind of the directive from the selectmen as to, you know, how they want to see the, the budget process for the next fiscal year. So I wanted to, you know, to have that on the agenda. That's one of our first things that are, is coming up on the calendar on November third, um, to start, you know, thinking about that.
Okay. All right. Um, I think we gotta really look at the status of all our departments too. And I think we're doing pretty well with getting everybody out of, um, I wanna say the dark ages, um, and getting everybody equipped. Um, fire departments getting pretty equipped with what they need. Same thing with police. Highways getting, you know, getting what they need. So in the future with a lot of this stuff, I think it's gonna become, instead of we absolutely need these to be able to function, it's gonna be more maintenance now. And keeping things running, maintaining a, a level of, um, functionality. Um, you know, a lot of stuff we're gonna have to look at is, you know, we all know things are going up, fuel expenses are going up, all this stuff's going up. So, you know, planning for all that stuff too.
Sure, sure.
Then payroll, we know that's automatically gonna go up because they have their, um.
The new pay scale.
New pay scale that's through, so. Yeah. Is this something we're gonna sit with finance committee about too?
Yeah, we, we, we could have a discussion with them. We could, you know, if it's the board wanted to, I'd see if we do a joint meeting, um, you know, that, that's been done in, in the past for, you know, for, uh, this type of discussion. Um, you know, and, you know, this is just a, again, this is just a reminder, starting to, to start to, you know, think about the conversation. Um, you know, we don't have to really notify departments until, uh, the December twelfth date, you know, to, to try to give them the d- the, the clear direction as to how you guys wanna to move. Um, so we do have some time, but again, yeah, just wanted to, to bring this to, to the attention and to start, you know, thinking about it. Believe it or not, it's, it's gonna be here before you know it.
Yeah, yeah, it's. Budget's always one of the ones that it's like, it runs everything. Everything runs around the money, but, um, you don't wanna be telling departments to make cuts when you've worked so hard to improve them to get them to move forward either.
And, and you know, in this discussion, obviously you can also start, you know, thinking about, you know, I know it's not just this building, but you know, the school department and what, what you wanna do in terms of, you know, an allotment over there, you know? If you wanna put them on notice earlier to plan accordingly, you know, you could certainly do that. Um.
Well.
Have we received the financial analysis that we asked for?
I have not. I, I, I've never, I.
Nope, and I'll send out another email.
Yeah.
And I'll send out the, the bulk email to everybody now because I got no response either asking them for their, um, the audit that they did for the school, um, which they did say they would share with us and give to us, um, a while back. And we're getting no response, no nothing to emails and questions about this. Um, so I think I would honestly say at this point, they should definitely be on notice that their budget's not gonna go well for them, um, because we don't know what they're spending the money on. And we're gonna look deep into that budget when they come to us about it. Cause they're gonna eventually have to come to us asking for money, especially if they're asking above minimum contribution and they pretty much put their hand in our face the entire time, not wanna share anything with us. Eventually they have to come to the table. So, you know, it would be in their best interests if anybody of, from the school department or school committee is listening to start sharing information. Because this would be a lot easier to do together than us trying to force issues and force information and try to get information. You know, we would like to work with them as we agree. Just, you gotta share it with us. You gotta tell us what, what was in your audit. Public information. And, you know, we control the budget somewhat, so. Yeah. You know, at some point, we gotta sit down with FinCom too and discuss all this. Because I'm sure FinCom's aware that we still haven't gotten anything from them, from the school committee. Right? Got any?
Yeah, so my question, I guess result revolves around, so payroll is a known quantity, right?
Correct.
Everybody's getting a two percent raise.
Or what, you know, whatever they sell on the scale, yeah.
Yeah. So if you take that out of the budgeting for the moment.
Right.
What other expenses are there? So if you look at something like planning board or maybe the tax collector or, um, the treasurer, what other expenses would they, those departments and offices have?
You know, they have their expense lines, you know, are they anticipating an increase? Are, are you anticipating an increase in, um, in, in an expense in, in, in a, in a various department? Is it because of maybe fuel? Is it because of, you know, supplies? You know, are you gonna just do a, you know, an, an increase across the board? Um, are you gonna look at individual departments? Are you gonna say, um, you know, we're gonna keep it at level services, you know?
So, I mean, highway, police, fire, fuel's gonna be one big thing, right? I mean, that's just gonna go up.
True.
But I'm just curious.
It's not just fuel. It's vehicle maintenance, vehicle equipment, because fuel, everything that's shipped, everything that's produced, everything, all that stuff's going way up. Uh, it's, and it's, as we're seeing with vehicles, getting harder and harder to get. This stuff's getting, you know, it's gonna become where it's just not available. So that's why now where we can get it, it's in our best interest to get this stuff and kinda weather through a few years if we have to, but we're good.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we're probably gonna have to weather through it for a few years because the fuel thing's probably not gonna get any better.
No.
Um, you know, and prices are just gonna keep on going up. Um, you know, it's, it's gonna be tough because we can't, we just can't read it. You know, we wish we had a crystal ball. We can't say level fun because they're not gonna survive.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, level fun would be a cut.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't be able to survive, you know?
Level service makes more sense.
But then they'd have to come, you know, I know in the previous years, we've had the departments come to us with their proposed budget and saying, hey, this is what we got. And we look at the budget and say, okay, that's reasonable, you know, try to work with them. Um, but that's a lot. Going through every department and going through all line items with every department too. So we gotta give them some guidance, but it's hard in this economy to do, you know?
Well, I mean, we could shoot for level service and see where it lands and then maybe back up a little if we have to.
Right.
And again, we can't, salaries aren't fixed.
Right.
So it's gonna be other stuff.
This contractual stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
That's done.
Salaries and wages.
Something to think about also, you know, obviously, you know, you also can, you know, I know that one of the arguments that was made in the spring and I was relatively new for the, um, with schools was, well, geez, you didn't, you didn't tell us. But if you guys tell them now that expect, hey, look at a level service or a, the same above minimum or less above minimum now, then there's no excuse, right?
I'd say zero above minimum at this point.
Or zero, or zero.
Because we just don't know what they're spending. And I can't, I can't sit there and say, let's put more money, the taxpayers' money into something that they will not talk to us about. And, and it just, you know, if, if I wanted money from you, I'd tell you what it's about. Hey, I'm here to pay this, this and this. Can you give me the money? Okay, it sounds reasonable. Or, no, I just want you to write me a check. I'm not telling you what it's for. Just give me a check.
Yeah.
Well, we have the example of Chief Kane asking for a F.
Yeah, they come in.
It's an F two fifty, doesn't know what color, four tires, a bed and I can't use it.
This is the price, this is what we get in, boom, boom, boom. There you go. Full transparency. We don't get that with the school.
Yeah.
We get nothing. We don't know what we're getting.
But if you tell, if you tell them now, then they can budget appropriately in anticipation for that. So that, that, that excuse is off the table. It's not, not that they didn't know. If you tell them now, they have plenty of time to budget for what you anticipate to do in the future.
Maybe it's also time to have a joint meeting with the select board in West Brookfield. Invite them over and start that conversation.
Do we know when, when is the next school meeting, the school meeting?
I, I'm not sure. It's on the website. I haven't checked.
Yeah, we don't get, we don't get alerted either, so.
Yeah, they, they have a website for that, so.
Can we ask them to be added to their email list that they would be?
We can ask, but.
We already did. At the last meeting, we asked to be notified.
Yeah, and we didn't get it.
Right, we, we were gonna get invited to budget meetings. That, I mean, when was that meeting? In September?
September, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So I think we, I, I would honestly put them, I, you know, my opinion, is I'd tell them right off the bat, not talking to us, you're getting zero above minimum. If you want money, you kinda come to us and justify it. You gotta tell us what you need the money for. Because, you know, they can come back at us and say, oh, I want one point three million dollars above minimum. Okay. Where's the other money? Where'd that go? You know, we wanna know where this money's going. Yeah, then put on that there.
I, I just end up on the website for the corporate regional school district and the school committee information.
I was gonna say their ne- their next meeting's the twenty-first. Um, they originally had it scheduled for the fourteenth, but that was the same day we're holding the special town meeting. So their last meeting, they voted to move it a week over.
Is that a budget meeting or a regular?
That's a regular school committee meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that we necessarily need to go to those.
I, I know usually their budget meeting, all their other subcommittees are usually like a week or so before the regular school committee meeting. And then they have whoever's chair of the subcommittees usually at the school committee meetings and.
Right.
Recording all the info from that.
I have to say thank you very much for recording those meetings when you see them too.
Yep.
Because it's nice to get some information from there. Cause I, I do watch the meetings that.
I was gonna say the, the last one, so when we looked, when I looked up the analytics from YouTube, had, I think it was some like almost six hundred views, um, from the last meeting. And, uh, we had it going live on cable and on our live stream and different points of the meeting, I seen as like highest thirty people wa- watching the cable livestream. So apparently the school committee's been a, been a hot topic overall.
Yeah.
I, I know on Facebook it has.
I know, I've been getting a lot of heat about it from people too. And, you know, I, I don't know how they're not getting the picture by now, but I know a lot of residents have been coming up to me and very passionate about this issue. So I would not wanna be in their seats. You know? Yes, sir.
Well, there again, you gotta realize that a quarter of this town are over the age of sixty-five. You can't keep soaking us in property tax increases. We don't have it.
Right.
My savings are gone.
And that's why we're taking it so serious. Because for many years, it's, it's a black hole. They ask for amount of money, they get the money and it disappears. We don't know what's, where it's going, what it's being done with. Our last budget meeting last year with, um, Brett, um, the old superintendent caused us to have a lot more concerns. Cause when we're sitting there asking them where money's going and comparing, comparing it, you ask for one point three million dollars at one line there, you use a hundred thousand, eighty thousand, another hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, that's, they issued three hun- three hundred thousand, where's the other one million dollars going? Other things. What other things? You know?
Well, see, another thing that a lot of the taxpayers don't know about when they vote on these increases, yeah, you voted a million dollar increase this year, next year, that's the minimum.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It doesn't go down.
Yeah, to be very careful how much you.
No, it goes up.
Yeah.
And understand their situation too, because the state only gives them very little, um, towards each student for the year. It's like nothing. It was like twenty dollars originally, but now this year went up to.
Well, it went from thirty to sixty.
Thirty to sixty, okay.
It doubled, but still like sixty dollars.
Yeah, and that's, that's one day for some students. And some students that we have in the school system use up all that, just, just for their services.
And just think about the year of COVID when the school was closed. We didn't get any money back.
Well, there was still school for a lot of the kids and they were also still teaching because they're doing online teaching and.
It was more expensive for online than in person. That's why they tried to get the in person quickly because it was, it was, it will save money.
How's it more for online?
Cause they had to pay it.
They have to repay.
All the services that went into it online. Then they had to get all the kids that couldn't get them laptops and they had to get all the equipment for them.
Well, still laptops, as far as I remember, were grants.
But then you gotta pay IT fees, software fees and it is a lot that go into just a laptop other than just, here you go. Now, now I gotta, now I gotta make sure, and I, I think they were actually paying for their internet too, to, to be able to do the services.
My granddaughter was only online two hours, three days a week.
Well, my kids, my kids were every day, you know, several hours there. They were very good at it.
It was not a good system.
Well, it depends, because I, I can attest that I really like how my kids did on, you know, online learning. Um, I know it's, it's not the best because you lose the personal contact and social, you know, with everybody. But whoever, you know, you know, will tackle into the computer, it was a good thing. I learned a lot because I was helping them all the time. You know, it, it, it was a good thing, but I know it was more expensive. But, you know, by the way, um, next budget to commit meeting is November seventh. I found it.
Okay, cool. So November seventh for the budget meeting. If we could just put a note for that.
And voting is the next day.
Tuesday or something?
Six thirty, November seventh.
And voting's the next day.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, because voting is a Tuesday.
Do we have planning board that night?
Oh, yeah, we do.
Maybe Jim can. Did you want me to go on the plane with that night?
Oh, yeah, that was, yeah, cause that's gonna be a potentially contentious, we, yeah, planning board.
Yeah.
And Jim has some background.
So we would see how to attend that one. But I welcome all the residents, November seventh for the, um, budget meeting for.
Time again, Derek? What time?
At six thirty.
Budgets committee, next meeting is November seven at six thirty. Maybe there's a way that cable can split in two? I don't know. Or they can not record planning, but record.
Oh, yeah, I don't know which is the.
Which one would be better?
I don't know if they do the budget for them. I don't know if they, I think they do the regular meetings. I don't know if they do the budget.
Some committees, yeah.
So.
Why?
So yes, you gotta. So yes, you got us thinking and I would definitely.
Try to get some more um, some more numbers and some more hard facts for you for the next meeting.
And I would, I don't know if we wanna let the school know that, hey, you you're gonna have to stop working with us or. You might not get anything. So. You know, I'm gonna send out another email asking for um, the audit that was done, um, to get that information. Hopefully, somebody responds.
And then it was like a three year thing?
Yeah, we were gonna get three years.
Yeah.
The current and the past two.
So, yeah.
Maybe it's time to ask the town council to.
Well, we can also do a request, right?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it shouldn't have to be that way, you know.
I know, that's why we're, yeah.
When we all agreed to work together, we should be able to work together. Especially something on this because they're coming to ask us for money.
Yeah.
And, you know. If you don't wanna share where the money's going, don't be surprised if we're hesitant to give you any money at all at that point.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the town is perfectly aware of our stance by now and what we've been saying because you just wanna work together, but talk to us. So. All right, so we got a plan.
Okay.
All right, um, warrants and bills.
Yep, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants, number thirty eight payroll, fifty seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy nine dollars and ninety cents. Number thirty nine vendor, forty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and eighteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills, WB Mason for a total of a hundred and thirty one dollars and forty cents, HR Direct, three hundred and seventy three dollars and eighty nine cents, Calco, a hundred and eighty dollars and eighty seven cents, Comcast, twenty dollars and twenty six cents, Security and Fire Integrations LLC, six thousand, two hundred and forty three dollars and fifty cents, Marlin Capital Solutions, eleven hundred and seven dollars and twenty three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. And then I make a motion for the following bill. For Jeep Joyce, I hawker. Uh, this is for fifteen dollars and ninety three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
David Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously with.
I recuse myself.
Mister I hawker, recused. Okay, so minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from October twentieth.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. So new business. Number nine. Do we have new business?
Nothing.
I don't have any.
Okay, old business. So we got Matt, the baseball person has asked if he could leave the inside batting cage in the room for the gym for the winter months. So that is already down there. It's just some baseball equipment that was stored down there. I know we're having them move a lot of stuff out there, which he'll be cleaning that out more tomorrow. You know, you went through and grabbed a bunch of soccer soccer stuff out of there. Um, and um, baseball's grabbing some more stuff tomorrow.
Tonight.
Tonight? Um.
There's this big cage and then the machine throws the baseball.
Pitching machine.
And he would like to know if they could keep that in the corner down there.
There's actually plenty of room in there now. So I I think it's no problem at all.
I'm having locks changed um, on Monday so that and so he'll have to ask one of us to go and let him in. He'll no longer have a key.
I'm good with it. You good with it?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yes, sir, okay.
Okay. And we're cleaning out that room so we can move um some files and stuff, some archive stuff down there to clear out our archive room. So the police department could put their Milo system in the archive room and moving some other stuff out of the old Boy Scout or um, room. So Parks and Rec can move their stuff into that room. To clear out one of their rooms. So uh, Veterans Council can have their own office. So there's a lot of moving around to get everything to work. And we have uh, the prison come in tomorrow?
The trial court, yeah.
Trial court?
Yeah. Coming tomorrow.
And whatever contacts you have over there, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Um, you all been doing work over there, and I know Mister Dusty's been working on that too. Thank you very much.
He supervises them, yeah.
He does a great job.
He does the supervision for the trial court people, so that was very helpful.
Above and beyond, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
And to add to Mister Dusty, he helped me today move about fourteen boxes from the uh, from that room for the soccer. And we left a few boxes with um, uniforms that unfortunately they have the name of just Warren. So I don't think the club will use them or anything because they it now has another name in two towns. Um, but I think, you know, on the soccer side, we're good.
We got the bins for textiles.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we left them there for tomorrow.
Yeah, put all those in the textile bins. They know there's little shoes and stuff, cleats and stuff in it, but it's a lot of stuff that. It's older.
Yeah. I'm sure these people would would repurpose stuff or be able to sell it or something, right? They're not, so.
Yeah. No, they'll be good with that. So and then we get seventy cents per pound too, right?
Seven.
Seven, seven cents. I want seventy cents.
Sorry.
Still, seven cents per pound is a lot better than us paying to throw it away.
Yeah.
We got our first check, thirty three dollars.
Ooh, that's money.
We only had them a month.
They paid for the Comcast business bill, right?
Yeah.
With some leftovers.
Thirty dollars that we didn't have.
That's right.
And that was only one month.
So people feel free to bring old clothes and stuff and throw it in that in that textile bins because the town gets money for that.
Also, if you have small appliances and stuff like that, you can call the company, it's still on the website, and have them come to your home and pick it up.
Very good.
Yeah.
Small appliances.
Toasters and microwave ovens.
Small microwaves, yeah.
No washing machines.
No washing machines.
Refrigerator. From the nineteen sixties.
No furniture.
No, no furniture.
All right, so we got that going on, a lot of moves going on. And now we got the town administrator report.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board and members of the public. Um, this week, just to recap from last week's meeting, uh, the contract was signed. The board had given the authorization, signed the contract with Mon and Pest, so that has been signed initially. Uh, they will be um, coming November first for the initial setup and installation. And I I did notify all departments of that. Um, I also notified all departments to see if they if they have a need to keep food in their office, make sure it's in a sealed container. Um, and I have coordinated with our custodian to have, you know, make sure that 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 it's being monitored and and that everything has been up to date with with trash and frequency, increasing our trash frequency, making sure that it's disposed of, um, increase our frequency on that. So we're hoping to attack this at all at all levels. So this will this will be the first start for that. So that has been done. Uh, on November first, they will be in the building. Um, we were notified last week. However, the the executive offices of Housing and Community Development had an embargo on the announcement, but the town was awarded a one-stop grant for Prospect Street for three hundred ninety five thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, congratulations to CMRPC, CDAC, everybody who was in town that that participated in the project. Um, it the award did come down last week. There was an embargo on it until as of yesterday afternoon. Um, and we're really excited about getting this this Prospect Street completed. However, the one-stop Mass Works for School Street Improvement Project was not selected this year um, as part of a as part of the grant. Uh, was a little bit trickier for Mass Works. Um, you know, threshold on on this particular project, is my understanding, and and they encourage us to reapply in the following year. So there's those two updates on those grants. Um, also this week, I had a review, which you'll have a copy of in your packet. It's the annual review with the town's Northeast IT Systems Inc. Um, they had provided a uh, an analysis for their year to date on the town's infrastructure and IT. Um, the report is 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 there for your view. Um, there was a couple of things that were brought to my attention during the during their presentation. There was a um, our our server um, is scheduled, a warranty is up in April of twelfth of twenty three. Um, so that is anticipated to be an expense of about nine hundred dollars, the warranty on the server. Um, it is factored into our request for free cash to be used for that article uh, to make sure that we have appropriate funds available to pay, uh, to to have a warranty, continue on with a warranty for the server. Um, it was recommended by IT to to continue on with the warranty. Um, and also, um, the um, our our service, our subscription to Sonic Wall, uh, our um, our firewall support subscription is also up around the same time. Uh, they have two different subscription packages. A two-year would be for nine hundred and forty dollars, or a three-year is for one thousand, uh, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, it was recommended, you know, obviously for financial reasons, it makes sense to go a three-year for a for our firewall on on that. Um, and that has also been accounted for for budgetary purposes um, by an article at the special, so we'll be able to clear that up for um, those those expenses in that line item. So we will have the funds to pay for that. Um, I also indicated to Northeast IT that this particular contract um, it was, I guess, it's normally been on auto renew, like after, right, right after they do their annual presentation, it just like automatically renews. I said, that's really not in the best interest of the town to have it automatically renew. I I much would rather have us having a formal vote and a sign off on it um, to see if we want to, you know, move in a different direction if it was into the town's best interest. Um, so we've asked for them, I've asked for them to stop the auto renew on this particular contract. Um, there has been an increase, I noticed, uh, in annual subscription costs. It's usually um, a little over two thousand dollars. It was two thousand, three dollars a month. Is the monthly cost for for our our subscription for their services. Uh, but they are charging us an additional three hundred and eighty dollars for additional users. But we haven't, I've asked for a list of all of the users. Uh, I've gotten the list. I haven't had a chance to really thoroughly comb through it. But on face value, I can see that some of the users that are there are no longer here. Uh, and some of the users that that are there may not necessarily need all of the access that it that is that is designed for. There's a, there's access for just internet, and then there's access to the full suite of services such as Microsoft Office and Excel and and all of that. So we we can go through that list. I I wanna work with Karen to go through that list to see, you know, if these people are still here, if they still need these things, to see if we can clean it up, to see if we can save some money on that. So if we can knock that list down, every user that we don't need, we're gonna save a hundred dollars. So we're gonna clean up the list. Um, so I asked for them not to renew anything as of right now. Let us clean up everything and then we'll we'll start the renewal shortly thereafter.
Okay, so last time they did this review was with me, and I found the same thing, is there's a lot of users on that list that
Right.
either didn't need what they were getting or were gone.
Right.
Well, the other thing that I also found out is that, for example, for the fire and police, if the same person uses the same computer, you don't need to have all access for each officer or each fireman. You just need the one for each computer.
So I think we can go through that with, you know, going through departments and, you know, combing the list down and then I I eventually we will save money.
Yeah.
So um, so that's uh, and I haven't had any complaints with Northeast IT. I think they've been very responsive. Uh, and they've been pretty very easy to work with. So I don't have any complaints, but, you know, I wasn't too keen on the auto renew, and I I wanted to be able to have the ability to to sit down with them and and really discuss things and, you know, and go over cleaning up this list and being made aware of things that are in the future, like these warranties and the firewall that we need to plan for. So I think that's where that's where we are. We have it budgeted for, so we'll be able to move forward with that. Um, and we'll adjust the the users and all of that.
So with Northeast, I I know they've sent out some phishing attempts to see if they would grab some employees just as a kinda, hey, you know you shouldn't be doing this, this is a scam. Don't fall for these type of things and, you know, require them to do some training after that. Have they done that lately?
I don't think so. I hope that's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, they did. Just this last week I got to.
Oh, really?
Okay.
I didn't fall for them though.
I wish I had them. I will.
Well, yeah, but you won't know if they're from Northeast IT.
You don't know that they're Northeast IT.
Unless you fail. And then you either your computer's hosed or you get it.
Well, yeah, actually, Northeast IT's, when they send it out, if you click on it, it sends you over to their site. You have to take their class again.
Yeah. And they do have other training that has been offered occasionally and.
So there was a, there was a training that was not too long ago, maybe in July, I wanna say. And, you know, we we got behind it and we encouraged employees to participate, and I think there was an uptick in employees that participated in that one.
Okay, cause the first one we did, it wasn't a very good.
It wasn't a very good one, but the second one was, I think, was much more well attended.
And I would like to add that, if it's okay, add that to the evaluation process.
Okay, sure, sure.
You need to, people need to be taking these trainings, right? Cause all it takes is one person to click on a link.
Well, that's that's something else. Speaking of that.
Conflict of interest.
No. We need to start doing town employee training where everybody is required. So there's certain things that we need to be doing and making sure that we have somebody come in and teach all our town employees things like sexual harassment, all those trainings that we're required to be doing. But we we need to start getting on that where okay, you know, this, because the the attendance for the online one wasn't really that that good.
No, it wasn't. It was pretty good.
It was kinda disappointing. And, you know, I know these other things we're supposed to be doing. Diversity training, sexual harassment training, um, there's a few of them that we're supposed to be doing. If we could do like a training day for town employees where we have somebody come in for a group, an HR person or whatever, and sits down with everybody and says, okay, you can't say this to another employee, or if you're supervisor, you shouldn't be doing this. Just so we can make sure that people are are basically put on notice not to do that stuff. I hope it's not going on, but we do have to keep up on that. That's, I believe that's an annual requirement for a lot of places.
But again, it's hard to discipline somebody if they haven't received.
They never received it.
Right, so then we're.
You have to, yeah, it puts us in a liability.
Yeah, yep. Um, and Jim, so in the report, can you email that to us?
This one's sure.
Cause all the even pages are missing from the printout. Oh.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are all the odd pages. So I was looking.
It's nine, eleven.
I wanted to look up at the backup stuff, and it's on page. I wanted to look up at the backup stuff, and it's on page 10. And I'm like, well, there's nine, and then there's 11.
Because you sent it to me double-sided, and I didn't copy it double-sided. My fault.
Okay, yeah, we can, I'll email it to you.
Yeah, just email it to us.
So there was that that happened this week. Also, since we met the last time, Maya, our insurance provider, had a risk management grant that we did submit for. I worked with Ralph from the sewer department, our chief operator. We, there was a section on the Maya grant. These were grants that Town could be awarded for less than $10,000. And so I worked with Sewer Department because one of the categories that you could pick from was, you know, sewer preventative maintenance. And when talking with Ralph throughout last week and the week before, there was really a need for a camera and a scope to see if, you know, if lines are blocked, if sewer lines are, have a blockage, or have a leak of some sort. So there's companies out there. There's an OptiCam out there that has like a 300-foot line that will go through a sewer line, take pictures. We'll take live-stream video of the line. So we applied for the grant, and the grant was accepted by Maya. We should know probably mid-November if we're going to be awarded it. But it is one of their top priorities for preventative maintenance within sewer departments, and that they are seriously considering this grant. I spoke to Joanne about it. I spoke to another Maya rep about it, and how it's really important, the aging infrastructure that we have in town with our sewer lines, that this could be a huge tool for the sewer department for when they do inspections or to see if there's a blockage or a leak, that they could send this down. They don't have the technology right now to do this, so this would be a great tool. It came in right under the $10,000 mark. So we're hoping that we are able to purchase this piece of equipment and technology. So that was applied for. Next is that, as you know, we had for a software provider last month, QDS made a presentation. This month, upcoming month, November 9th, Vadar is going to come back in town to make a presentation. And they're going to be coming in on the 9th of November. They're going to make a presentation for their tax-collecting, treasury-assessing, and accounting software. They do not do permitting or building. So you would have to contract out to either a permit link or a permit I's and see if they could communicate, but they wouldn't be under one system. And there may be, you know, a cost for having those systems communicating directly because they're not affiliated with Vadar. Vadar is just for the accounting and the financial software. So they will be coming in to make a presentation. And I would like to get one more company in here, maybe a Softrite or Exella, which I think they've been merged together now, is my understanding. And they, to provide another system so that the employees that are within these departments can have another system to compare, and then they can better make a, you know, a recommendation and have their questions answered to see what they feel is comfortable for them. We're going to see if we can also have QDS come in and do some more one-on-ones because I've gotten a lot of responses back from people that they really like QDS so far. So, you know, maybe they can do some more one-on-ones and more interacting directly with some of the departments. So we'll see on that. We're still waiting here back on the grant. That was submitted, the IT grant, so we won't know on that, I would anticipate, until, you know, maybe mid to late next month. But we'll have at least three companies in here to make the presentations to see where we are with the system. And then finally, we also had a, myself and the treasurer sat down with Colonial Life. They are a life insurance company, and they are offering voluntary benefits for our full-time employees. Again, increasing the benefit package, you know, it's not always about, you know, the dollar amount or the hourly rate or the salary. It's about, you know, the benefit packages that we can offer to and to attract and to retain talented employees. You know, Colonial Life is offering voluntary payroll-deducted life insurance, disability insurance, supplemental health insurance, accident and disability insurance. You know, they have these products available that they could offer to full-time employees as a payroll deduct. They could also have the ability to waive some of the, at the start of the program, to have the ability to waive like a physical. They could have guaranteed written policies for full-time employees. And so there's that benefit towards the program. So it's something that I think the Town had offered some many years ago that, you know, doesn't offer anymore currently. So if we could expand it a little bit more to see if there's an interest, like we did with Division, which we got, you know, pretty well overly, you know, some good support on. I think this is another tool in our tool chest that we can offer to employees to see if, you know, if there's some interest in that. So there's, they came in, and Dawn was pretty impressed with them as well. So, you know, we are going to probably, I would anticipate the discussion to continue on and maybe another department head meeting soon. We haven't had one since probably July. So I'd like to, you know, get everybody up to date with some of the stuff, like the budget calendar. I know emails have went out to all people informing them of all of this stuff, as we normally do. But, you know, having a real budget, have a department meeting, I think, would be good. You know, it's just that every time we do it, you know, I'm taking away from, you know, the department. And if they're a department of one, then that means closing the department. And I don't like to close a department, especially if the public wants to have access to it, unless I really have to. So, you know, I think we could have this meeting, you know, in the morning in the next coming up weeks to go over just some of the stuff. I know I've sent out emails and memos about it, but to have it in person and ask any questions and to see if they had an opportunity to also review the, you know, the evaluation form that was the draft that was sent out. So all of this, we're going to compile. I'll work with Karen on scheduling a date, and we'll have to do one in the next week or so.
Does this Colonial Life, are these benefits that are already offered, or are these new?
No, these are new benefits. So, you know, these are voluntary benefits. So, you know, say for example, an employee doesn't have life insurance. Well, they have an opportunity that Colonial Life will write a full-time employee up to $100,000 with no medical evaluation, you know, automatic, you know, guaranteed issuance. And, you know, they could have that, you know, deducted from their paycheck, you know, to pay for that. So if you wanted, you know, $50,000 of life insurance, or you didn't have life insurance, you know, you could buy that. You could also buy a disability plan for disability insurance. You could buy a medical bridge insurance. There's a critical illness and cancer insurance, you know, that could be offered to employees. These are all different products that, you know, some municipalities offer and some don't. These are voluntary basis, and they're, you know, payroll-deducted.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's a good idea to be able to provide any benefits we can.
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
And it's not costing us anything. It's, they're electing into it. We're just giving them an option to do this.
It's voluntary.
Yeah.
What do you think, Derek?
I'm good. I think everything that we can get for our people, for our benefit, it's a plus.
Was there anything else?
Nope, no, that was, that would be the conclusion of the report. And obviously, you know, just, this week was just finishing up with Finance Committee and the warrant articles for Town meeting. Joe, you got a question?
Okay. Now, I remember even 20 years ago, when I was at work, once a year, we'd have to come in and have anti-harassment training. But in the last five years that I've worked, it was also safety on the job. I mean, it may not sound like much, but all right. You've got a strap across the floor there in front of the desk. If you trip on it, you're going to fall down. Yeah, you know it's there, but you have to be, remember it's there. I'm going to step over it.
We actually have that at my work. We actually have environmental safety. And one of the things they talk about is how to walk on ice.
Yep.
You know, because a lot of people brush it, and they try to make big strides, and they slip and fall. It's like, well, walk like a penguin. And the guy, our safety guy, puts his little penguin hat on, and he goes, "You don't see penguins falling, you know, on ice." He, they walk on ice all the time, so walk like a penguin.
You learn how to walk flat-putting.
They have short legs.
Yeah. They know how far to fall.
Say like, even the chief, he's the head of the department, all right? His officers have a weapon. Make sure it's on safety, because if it's not, you pull it out of that holster. It's likely to go off.
They get that as part of their range.
Not the safety.
So they get that out of their range. You get safety briefs every time they do a range. And that's part of the fire instruction, which they get to do annually.
Say like so.
Twice a year.
Say like the fire chief, all right, if you're going to be hanging on to the bar at the back of the truck, there's that strap. Put it around you.
Those days are long.
You guys don't want to hang it off the sides of trucks anymore.
Those went out about 12, 15 something years ago. Nobody is allowed on the back step of the fire trucks. No, those are non-existent anymore.
But there is stuff that, you know, like King Ghoul. It'd be good if we could do a training day for Town employees or a half-day or something like that. And we can go over all these basics. And they can, a lot of times, they go over like IT stuff, like FISA-ing. You know, when you get a phishing alert or something, or somebody, hey, if somebody comes on and this pops up on your email, do you click on it? Do you put your credit card in? And other stuff like, don't give people your credit card number or your social security number, you know, basic stuff like that. Having an IT guy come in and teach that stuff. I know Derek teaches, you know, they teach a lot of stuff at his company. It'd be something that we need to be doing here because.
803.
Okay. I know, even when I was going to these training meetings, you'd have to sign a paper with your name, the date, and even.
So we still have the comments, concerns, and everything else?
In some of the places, the instructor.
Okay, we got to take a five-minute break so they can switch over the tape. And then we can go from there. Travis, you guys doing a switch-over? He doesn't see any move. Travis, you guys awake up there? Well, I can't see that one.
I know, but I can't.
Okay, all right. So taking a five-minute break so you can do your switch-over. We've got a couple of things left on the agenda.
Yeah.
I was hoping we could get through it, but then I noticed the blur.
Hey there. How we doing? No, I'm going to pass. Candy.
I wouldn't turn it down.
Hey, watch out with the wire.
I'm doing that for those second dates, so every year, same thing, over and over and over. Sometimes they even give you a little test.
One of the state guys for procurement, they have a training that they can come out and do, talk about procurement. I think that'd be a really good one to.
Yeah, I know you don't want to.
And that's, it'd be free to.
That's the last one.
Thank you.
Rich?
No, I'm going to skip. Add ice cream.
You still have the chocolate.
Thank you.
How can we identify for our station interruption or whatever?
A word from our sponsor.
Yeah, we get sponsors?
Maybe, it plays music.
So, all right. So you were talking about something last night? We stopped it, we move on.
No, we've done, the same thing we were talking about, a half-a-day of training.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's do some...
Some trainings, okay.
Yeah. Figure out what, maybe a company can come in.
Sure.
Somebody that specializes in that. And I know you were talking about another training that could be offered for procurement.
Yes, yeah.
I think that would probably be like department head training.
Department head training.
Because we're gonna have to have some more specific training for department heads and supervisors, too. But just for general, everyday employee, we should have, you know, all the basics, you know, sexual harassment, diversity. I know there's a couple of other ones, safety. And those of y'all could fit in like one day or half a day. And they usually about an hour each. Cyber, where you talk about, you know, instead of just getting an email, "Oh, I got an email, I deleted that, I don't read that." Now, you know, you know you're not supposed to be doing this. Don't be using your credit card with these weird sites and stuff, like town computers and, you know, anything like that. And then procurement side, anybody that's dealing with money should know what they can and can't purchase and stuff, so, and the ethics behind it, so. Oh, that's another one, ethics training.
Ethics, yeah.
You gotta have ethics training to, as a town employee, you can't be doing this, you can't be saying that.
Board members, too.
Yep.
Everybody.
Everybody.
The ethics, what they do is they have a training online, the state requires you to do the online portal training, so...
Yeah. But it's good, because people go skip, 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 skip. Pass! And they actually learn...
On that ethics, you can do that, though.
They have to wait a certain amount of time.
Yeah.
You can't just skip it.
Oh, you can skip it after a certain amount of time?
Well, you have to, you watch the little bar at the bottom.
You've done this before?
No.
Oh, okay.
You're incriminating yourself, Karen.
No, I just noticed.
I wish I knew that.
So it'd be good if we have a sit-down. And in this way, people could sit there and say, "So if I'm giving somebody a back rub in the back row, he's a town employee, like, he doesn't oppose it first."
I didn't complain.
He didn't complain about it. You know? We know the ethics and the lines that were crossed in that interaction.
What all the people are missing when they don't come to the meetings?
I know. Well, I don't know, people might be coming to my meetings thinking they're getting back roads now.
As an employee, I always look at that as good things. What it really bothered me was like, oh, tomorrow there's training. Oh, yeah, 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 but there's lunch. Okay, I'll go. So maybe, you know, we would talk something, and we can plan about it. You know, I offered some time ago, I'll do office and basic computer stuff. And maybe we can have a little luncheon here, some finger, food fingers to grab or something. And I'll put the computer, put it over there, teach, and let's try to make a sample. Then we can start bringing people and doing all this stuff.
Very good.
I'd also like to say, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what you two think, but I think it would, it's okay if you have a big department head meeting, and if you put a note on the door that says, you know, we're just gonna be tied up for an hour. I mean, you're not, you don't wanna have like half-a-day thing, right?
All right, no.
You wanna keep it short.
Yeah.
And maybe if you do it on the same day every month, like the first Tuesday of every month or something, you know, so people can plan. 'Cause, you know, Jeremy's gonna come in and maybe Sharon, right? So, you know, if it's important, I think you should do it.
All right.
You can manage the public and the expectations.
As long as the board's okay with that, yeah?
I'm okay with that. Yeah, you gotta get it done, you gotta...
I'd rather have the communication. If you feel it's important to get everybody together and talk and, or present info, present new things, you should do it.
And to be honest, is that, there's a point where people just don't read emails.
Emails, okay.
Yeah.
They're like, yeah, another one, ah, that's not important, I don't know. Where they skim through and they didn't get...
Yeah, they're really...
What you were saying is like, yeah, it's another one of Jim's emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
You know, and I hate to say, but it happens, you know? And if you sit them down in front of you, ask questions, talk. Maybe sit there grumpy-faced and everything, but they get some information.
Collaboration, right? Like on the evaluation, if you get everybody talking, you know, new ideas will come up and...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's like a brainstorming session.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're due for one.
Do what you need to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
All right. Okay, so correspondence. Did we get any? No.
I don't see any.
Okay. Comments and concerns?
All right, so I'll report on a couple of things. I attended the, well, attended online the water treatment plant construction meeting. So that's due to come online at the end of February, so that's good. For those of us on the, on the water department, October was a rough month, 'cause they were flushing hydrants. So if it was your day, or the next neighbor over, neighborhood over was getting flushed, you know, you ended up with brown water, so... But hopefully, hopefully, once this goes online in February, that this will slowly start to reduce, you know? So, keep our fingers closed.
We hope it.
Yeah. So what it's designed for. Then the Community Development Advisory Committee, CDAC, met last night. Did you mention the One Stop that was awarded for Prospect Street? The municipal vulnerability preparedness grant along with the hazard mitigation plan. That's wrapping up. It's supposed to wrap up at the end of the year. Chris Duffy just wanted to get with you on the video.
Yeah, we went over, we went back and forth with emails, and we have a plan of action. The video is due by the end of November, but I think we can have it done before that. Just enough time, 'cause I read that they wanna see a draft. So we're gonna work on the draft, but I'm pretty sure that it will be a good draft.
Yeah. And it's exciting, 'cause once this is done, we can get action grants. And we can address the culverts in town and some of the other climate-related issues that are affecting us. There was also, Jim had mentioned probably a couple of weeks ago, the Green Communities grant that went to the elementary school to save energy. And then we talked yesterday about, you know, maybe something to consideration, to consider is, you know, solar panels on this building to offset the cost of this building. And Jeremy mentioned that the sewer department uses a ton of electricity. And maybe if we could do solar panels over there somehow, on the roof, on the grounds. I don't know, but...
Each month from CMRPC, no, I'm sorry, from C2 Mass Solar, they get a pretty big credit for that, the sewer department does.
The sewer department does?
Yeah.
How do they get the credit? 'Cause I don't have any solar power.
I, I don't know exactly, I don't understand that. I'm fired, get some, police get some.
Oh, they just take a little bit off of everybody's...
Well, no, they take a town, a sewer.
Oh, really?
So I don't know.
Well, they're probably the bigger consumer.
Allocation.
Okay.
I don't know how they do it. I just know, I just know the sewer, you know, will have like maybe five or six hundred dollars, and sewer will have a couple thousand.
Okay.
So I know that they are getting a discount that way.
All right, well, certainly something to, I mean, so we could talk to Julia at, it's Julia, right?
Julie Moore.
Julie Moore at CMRPC, 'cause she does these green communities, and maybe we can get a grant to do something like that.
Yeah.
We got a nice big roof up here that was most recently growing trees, so maybe we could have...
It was a little worrisome, though.
Grow some solar panels.
We might need to replace the roof before we do that, because put up panels.
I don't know, yeah.
So one of the things with the green communities is, and we're still trying to work out with the schools, is, you know, their share of the grant, right? So that has to be, you know, I'm trying...
It's a shooting grant.
Yeah, I'm trying to work that out with them, you know, some open lines of communication. But if, for some reason, we don't have, you know, the ability to perform that, or if that, if we have to turn the grant back, I mean, then it would halt our green communities' allocation for the following year. So that's why it's critically important to work, to see if I can get them to work with us on the, you know, on that portion of the, of the grant.
So right now, they're not in favor of providing their share?
Correct.
Which could...
It could jeopardize the town's grants, opportunities in green communities.
They're just not on my...
And this is something that they had planned about even before I got here, with doing this energy management system.
It's been a very long conversation and a lot of work.
They knew about this opportunity, and they wanted this energy management system at the elementary school to regulate the classrooms, and it makes sense. It totally makes sense to, you know, to make sure that one classroom's not eighty degrees and the other one's fifty degrees, you know?
Yeah, right.
It makes sense, and, but, you know, there's a, you know, the total projects is estimated about four hundred thousand. The grant's two hundred thousand. There's some credits out there that we could get from, from the energy company of about fifty thousand. So, you know, we're about, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars away, you know, to completing the project. So, I mean, you know, I've had discussions with them, and, you know, they're seeing, you know, they're supposed to get back, back in touch with me. I haven't heard any updates in a couple of weeks now, so...
Just one more thing.
Yeah. All right, and the last item I'll add concerning the CDAC is, we need members. So if you're interested in serving on the committee, for the most part, we deal with the community block grant, grants, which have helped fix roads all over the town. But then we've kind of dived into these, these new grants that came out, Complete Streets, Green Communities, One Stop, Open Space stuff, MVP, HMP, so... And working with Jim, you know, it's a good, good committee. Just kind of helps steer things, find, find projects, worthy projects, so... If anybody's interested, send a letter to the, to Karen.
They asked me to be on it, and I said yes, but I have other candidates that I could go to the meeting.
Yeah, so, you know, one or two people, it'd be great, have one or two people. So send a letter or an email if you're interested.
Very good.
And if you have questions, they could call me.
Thank you.
That's it.
Do you have any comments or concerns?
Just to remind everybody, are we good for Sunday and Halloween?
It's Monday.
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 Yes.
We're all set with that?
Yeah, yeah, I did. Jim, Jim McKeon did reach out to me earlier with some concerns about the forecast, but, you know, we're gonna kind of watch things. You know, he asked about, you know, my thoughts. My thoughts on moving into Sunday night, but, I mean, I don't think we've done that before, but, I mean, you know, he said he was concerned about some showers that evening, but I think right now, we're gonna continue to move. And, I mean, that would be a board of selectmen decision of whether or not they would wanna move that at the last minute, so...
It'll show rain all day?
Yeah, fifty percent chance of rain.
I don't know, I mean, it's, it's kind of a topic we can monitor, but, I mean, at the end of the day, it would be a board's decision to change the trick-or-treating for that evening, or alter that.
Sunday would probably be the better day. Tues, 'cause that rain may continue into Tuesday.
I don't know if you'll get the turnout, I, I don't know. We've never, I mean, we've had some storms in the past. I can't necessarily remember off the top of my head us ever changing that. I don't know what that would entail. But he did, I mean, I know he's, he's on tonight, he's on Zoom, but he did, he did reach out to me earlier.
Yeah.
Well, it does show rain.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was kind of hoping there'd be some spot showers or something, but...
Now, I got forty-two percent chance of rain.
It's New England, so everything can happen.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my personal opinions are a little bit too far out right now to make a call on that. I just, I mean, but...
The problem is, it's also sixty-three degrees, it's gonna drop down lower. So you've cold and rain.
For those who don't remember, the year Halloween had snow.
Yeah, I mean, we've been down this road before. I mean, it is, it is kind of, it is kind of...
I'd rather snow.
Yeah, I mean, it just, I, again, it would be, it would be a board decision. It would have to come from, you know, it would change, it would change the trick-or-treating hours and the day completely, so... It's not just the West Warren event, so...
Okay, so we posted on the web, so we'll assume Monday, unless it's on the website or a town alert, and we could put it on Facebook.
Yeah, yeah. Do you think like Saturday evening will be a better call, say, you know, it's gonna be...
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly monitor the weather and see how that, how that plays out. I mean, if it looks like it's just a chance of showers, or if it looks like it's something heavy, then I guess we can have that conversation. I mean, I'd hate to call anything now and move it, move everything around.
Yeah, Saturday and Sunday are both sunny, so...
Yeah, but you could easily move in from now to Sunday.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Or move out from Monday to Tuesday.
Yeah, anything is possible.
We've still got a few days left.
Yeah.
I think you should feel free to, you know, look at with Jimmy, the weather and everything, and if there's a need to change, just, you know, get in touch with us. I don't think there's a big thing not to change it, you know, if you want...
Well, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of families.
It's just, that's the problem, is notifying really everybody, and how, how do you do that? Notify the entire town that, you know, there's not gonna be trick-or-treating Monday.
Everybody's... You know, you know, a lot of people are gonna show up on Monday.
Yeah, I...
And...
Reverse nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's options out there. I'm just saying that, you know, you know as well as I do nowadays, if you tell them they can't go trick-or-treating on Halloween, how that's gonna, you know, it's just that, I hate to see that happen, I'd prefer not to do that, but, you know, I mean, I guess we just need to monitor.
So let's cross our fingers, let's try to hold as much as possible as the plan.
Yeah.
And if it rains like hell, we'll change on the thing apart, but... If it's not safe, let's call it that way.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, if it's thundering and lightning, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do a parade and have everybody out in the open. I mean, if it's light rain or something, I mean, we can, we can work around it, you know? But we've done it before.
And hopefully, we'll get a little dry stretch during that time.
Right around five, five-thirty, maybe?
Yeah. Last total.
Eight.
And then after that, down four. Yeah, just let us know. Jim, you on there, McKeon?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. So you heard the plan? For Halloween? You okay, Jim?
Yep, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
You heard the plan for Halloween?
Uh, yeah, I heard you guys talking about it a little bit. But just the only concern was the rain. I did watch a couple of forecasts tonight. It did appear that it was gonna be a little later in the evening, which maybe be here after seven or eight.
Okay.
But it's something to monitor. I'd probably like to maybe possibly look at another decision, maybe Saturday evening or something. Just for final...
Yeah, just let us know.
Okay.
What you guys recommend, and we'll make a decision. You know, we'll get through and make a call then. Then we can put out an alert if we have to change it. But let's stick with Halloween for now until we know...
Yeah, till it gets a little closer.
Yeah.
All right. Just wanna, like, put it on everyone's radar that something was coming.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So, question I have, Milo system, do you achieve?
Yep.
Do you have a scheduled date when that's gonna be set up?
As soon as I know when that's cleaned up, I can call the guy that's gonna install it and set the date with him.
Okay, all right. And then... The, Mr. Dusty, I know you guys removed a tree from the roof. Was that, did the roof get repaired from there?
The roof didn't need repair, it was a...
Just sitting in dirt on top of the roof?
Yeah, it was an area where the debris had from the wind had shifted all into the corner, kind of piled up enough leaves and debris for a small thing to germinate, and it grew. But it didn't, I looked, I was up there, it didn't appear like there was any damage to the membrane whatsoever. The concern was that there might be a damage to the membrane, but the roof's in, based on the photos that Adam took, roof's in very good shape. But that's something we need to watch out for, because eventually roots can work their way in, cause leakage.
All right, all right, and then, there's one more thing. That's it. All right, yeah, I have nothing else. So no more comments and concerns from us, anybody from the public?
Nothing on Zoom.
Joe?
Well, have we got any offers for a police station lease?
They're due back on Monday by eleven, so haven't heard of anything as of yet. But that's, you know, could be, a lot of these things come in last minute.